All right. Thank you, Colby. Good morning, everyone. I call this meeting to order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. Please note that there is a copy of the Open Meetings Act and it's located in the North Wall of the Legislative Chamber, and alongside that is an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I already made my first mistake. I'll tell you what it was later. We'll now commence the Douglas County Board of Equalization, Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Mr. Chair.
Here. The first item of business are items A and B on the agenda, A being, excuse me, the approval of minutes. The approval of minutes for the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 5th, 2024. Roll call, please. Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. What did I do? Oh. I need to read B. Call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 3rd, 2024, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Now is there a motion? Second. Please vote.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes six to zero.
Next item of business are Resolution C through I, which can include adjournment. Do I have a motion and a second on C through I? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Anybody here to speak on these resolutions? If not, that's what I should have done earlier. Sorry about that. Seeing none? We do not have need for an executive session, which leads us to the, we'll now commence the Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business is approval of the minutes for the Board of Corrections meeting held on Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The next item of business is the Director's Report from Director Myers. Hello, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Your report looks a little bit different this month, not significantly. I did merge a couple of things trying to make... My apologies. Your report looks a little bit different tonight in a couple of sections. I merged a couple of things together for making it a bit more efficient. Enclosure number one, administrative services, and we merged that with our personnel. After the fourth month of the fiscal year, we are 1,600, 1 million, excuse me, 677,908 dollars under budget. I don't want people to get too excited. Most of this is reserved for projects that have not hit our budget as of yet. 325,154 dollars were spent on overtime, which is a decrease of nearly 40,000 from the previous month. And approximately 820,000 dollars in bond payments were processed by our records division. Four officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in October. And I have a typo here that should say, as of October 31st, we were 103% staffed among correctional officer ranks, which includes our current academy, which began on October 15th. Eighteen officers are currently training and will graduate on November 22nd. One officer was promoted from CO1 to CO2, and I wanted to take a moment and congratulate a couple of people, one being Karen Beederman, who was my assistant. She retired after 23 years of service to Douglas County. And Deputy Director Amber Redmond earned an additional professional certification in the field of correctional health care during her attendance at the National Commission on Correctional Health Care Conference. She became a Certified Correctional Health Care Professional, or CCHP. She demonstrated a mastery of national standards and knowledge expected of leaders working in this field, and that certification is something I'm going to have a few of my top staff pursue. You know, the healthcare part of what we do continues to become more and more complex, and I felt like we need to have as much expertise on our side as we possibly can. Enclosure number two, community corrections and reentry services. The sanctioned center and transitional discharge center placed a total of 14 individuals in community corrections and saved 59 bed days in the jail. Work released admitted 20 individuals and house arrest admitted 56. The reentry assistance program, or RAP, admitted 20, and two individuals earned a GED. Reentry services and therapeutic communities, there were 45 individuals admitted into therapeutic community housing units. There are currently 123 individuals on the GED waitlist. Two individuals in the jail also achieved a GED. One thing of note that our, I want to give, mention Heather Robinson. She's our coordinator for our vocational and educational programs. She goes above and beyond in too many ways for me to mention, but she took the initiative to do a snapshot of individuals who were under the age of 21, and we had 114 individuals under the age of 21 in custody on the day that she did this. She went and surveyed all of them and found that 69 or 61% of these young individuals did not have a high school diploma. And that 35 or just over 50% of those who did not complete high school qualify for special educational services, which are still available into your early adult years. I'm going to be continuing to focus more on that in my reports than what I have in the past because I think I've not emphasized those efforts and the challenges that our folks face enough. There were 18 individuals referred to intensive outpatient treatment, and 35 individuals received substance use disorder evaluations. Pretrial services, 313 individuals were placed on pretrial release. That is a record high for any one month. Over the course of the month, there were 1,341 individuals supervised on pretrial release. 589 individuals participated in the 21st seven sobriety. 165 individuals were supervised via GPS monitors. 3,829 jail bed days were saved. Pretrial release theoretically saved Douglas County 612,640 in detention costs. Law library usage on the tablet system continues to demonstrate increased access with cost efficiencies for Douglas County. We're actually, we no longer have a physical law library because the law library is on the tablets, and we are currently converting that space into spaces for more mental health services and our intensive outpatient treatment program that CMHC operates. They haven't really had their own space, so they're, we'll be accomplishing that with some minor renovations to that area. Enclosure number three, compliance. Regular reporting of all compliance-related data continues. The Nebraska Department of Correctional Services conducted a security audit according to the standards set forth by the National Institute of Corrections. Verbal debrief found that areas of noncompliance were primarily in regards to our physical plant. The audit team was highly complimentary of our staff and their professionalism and knowledge of their duties. A full written report of the audit findings will be sent to us in the coming weeks. Enclosure number four, population. There were 1,249 admissions and 1,293 releases. The high count for the month was 1,025. The low count was 948. That is the lowest number for a single day in many years, at least 15. The average ADP was 982. This is also the lowest month, ADP for any month, in at least 15 years. I don't ever remember, I've been with the department for 17 years, I don't ever remember a month averaging under 1,000. The average length of stay for inmates released in October, the overall average length of stay was 27.74 days. 49.11% of those inmates stayed longer than 72 hours. If, those individuals stayed an average of 55.11 days. 50.89 individuals were released within 72 hours of being booked. Their average length of stay was 1.33 days. There were 127 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. marshal population decreased. The average felony pretrial population was 673, also a decrease. The average misdemeanor population, pretrial population was 117, also a decrease. Probation violations decreased. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 67% of our population were minorities. 15% of our population was female, and 18% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number five, and for the time being, this report is combined. We used to have two separate enclosures for medical and mental health. You may recall, I mentioned last month that we were, Wexford was working on building out reports in their EMR to be consistent with what we've tracked over time, and there's been some progress on that, but there's still some more work to be done. There were 961 intake screenings. There were 394 health and physical assessments. There were seven emergency medical care transports. Four of those were by 911. We had five hospital admissions. That's resulted in 46 days of hospitalization, and there were 39 off-site medical appointments. There were 136 initial psychiatric appointments. There were initial, 293 initial mental health assessments. 89 people were placed on suicide precautions. 150 people went through alcohol and drug and alcohol detox protocols. There were four referrals to the Board of Mental Health, and again, I do need to give credit where credit's due. The Lincoln Regional Center has stepped up. We only have four on the waiting list while we have 17 people there. Typically, those numbers would be flip-flopped historically. Enclosure number six, security operations and honor guard. The crisis negotiation team was deployed one time to negotiate with a mentally ill individual who had flooded his cell and was refusing to exit. Negotiators were successful in obtaining compliance without using force. Our emergency response team, or CERT, was deployed two times to assist in high-security searches. There were five searches conducted. Minor contraband included items modified for tattooing, nuisance items such as extra linens. Significant contraband recovered included what was suspected K-2, cash app information, and two items that were being, in the process of being modified into weapons. And there were no deployments for the honor guard in October. Enclosure number seven, staff development and wellness and retention. 14 individuals interviewed, were interviewed for correctional officer positions, and there were 43 applications received. Over 200 staff members have completed the 24 hours of training for, in strategic inmate, in the strategic inmate management philosophy. 14 staff members were referred to the wellness and retention office for assistance, and two staff members were referred to external mental health resources. Something that I'm taking particular note of is the attrition rate. You know, we have kind of fixed our hiring problem, but really, the ultimate goal is to fix our retention problem, and the attrition rate is improving. The first 10 months of 2024 is down 25% from the same timeframe in 2023. This allows us to invest in advanced training and skill development to a greater extent instead of having such a heavy emphasis on recruiting and academy training. Other noteworthy items, I want to thank the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 8, the African-American Correctional Officers Association, and the honor guard for co-sponsoring a fundraiser for one of our officers who was seriously injured in a car accident when, while returning home from work at the hands of a drunk driver. Several thousands of dollars were raised to assist this officer with expenses related to this unfortunate incident. And I want to dwell a little bit more on the, on the population. The reduction of incarceration, in the incarceration rate among citizens in Douglas County deserves more discussion. Due to the many possible factors that can influence this number, it is not possible to definitively point to any one factor or even a combination of factors. However, I want to command, commend the years and even decades of work by many in our community. Everything from the Omaha 360 collaboration, the Omaha Police Department, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office, the courts, particularly the problem-solving courts, state probation, the public defenders, the county attorney, the city prosecutor, diversion programs, and countless community partners, as well as our own longstanding reentry and rehabilitation programs for having an impact. I cannot help but believe that by making data-driven decisions based upon successful practices, we are collectively making this impact. Jail bookings are down from a high of 22,000 around 15 years ago to around 15,000 annually today, and incarceration days are down. And I am not here to declare victory, as there will always be room for improvement, and the work will never truly be finished. I am here to declare that we are collectively making meaningful and measurable progress. And with that, I'm ready for your report, or your questions.
Thank you, Director Myers. We do have questions from board members. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. I'm just going off your report. I don't have any of the backup information, the notebook, or any of that, so I'll just go off of what you have submitted here. Toodles on the average daily population of 982. And as far as I can recall, that's, that's a low as well. It's been a long time coming, but I think the low count of 948 is kind of a bar that we should go for and try to, try to see if we can get that moved down, but good for you. I just have a quick question on the majority-minority population. What's the status of that?
Fairly unchanged, Commissioner. It was, I believe it was 67%. The only solace that I can take in that is that while it's not becoming a bigger proportion, even with the population shrinking, that does mean there are fewer minorities in custody as well because it didn't jump up to 75%, you know, because it's not like the, you know, Caucasians are being released at a higher rate or, you know, so it appears that the overall decrease in the rate of incarceration is benefiting all groups, but it still is stubbornly high.
Yeah. I mean, the troubling thing, I guess, is no matter how low our population goes.
It's disproportionate.
Majority-minority seems to be hardwired into that composition, and so we're at 67% whether it's at 1,500 or it's at 950.
Right.
That's problematic. Not your call, I understand that, but what it does represent is a system that locks up minority people disproportionately by far to their representation in our population. That's very troubling going forward. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Boyle.
Yep. Thanks for that report, Mike. Just a couple of things. One is, we talk about pretrial release and how that's a relatively new program. Do you have recidivism rates on, on those folks that are involved in that?
I don't, in terms of like a long enough period of time to say meaningful data. What I can tell you is, and I don't have this number in front of me, but I was told from the city prosecutor that the failure to appears have been, have decreased. And, you know, and it's important to remember the scope of pretrial and what its goals are and what its goals are not. We hope that recidivism is ultimately an outcome for those folks, that it's improved, but the strategies are geared for trying to keep people from committing crimes while they're on pretrial release and getting them to come to court. You know, those are, that's really the limit of those, of what they're tasked with. Hopefully, there's some transferable skills and things that are, you know, good habits that are being developed during that time that extend beyond their pretrial release time and, and result in lower recidivism.
Great. And then on a separate topic, I appreciate the information you gave about recognizing the education needs of that core population, the, the young adults, basically. I think we all know the importance of education and recognizing that those who have special education needs have a harder time, first of all, of recognizing that, but second of all, of having it addressed. And that is how you can get folks who are kind of feel cast out or who are cast out to become productive members of society. So, so I really commend that, that portion, that effort. I think it's incredibly important to recognize that and to do what we can to fuel that in order to get, get folks the help they need to avoid them coming back into jail later. So, so that's a great, great program, a great effort. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Any other commissioners wishing to speak at this time? Commissioner Kavanaugh, your light is on. Second.
Just as a point of order, I don't have the backup documents for this meeting. I don't know why, but I could be able to follow along.
Mr. Commissioner Kavanaugh, we were informed that you were not going to be here today, so we, we apologize. That's why it wasn't on your desk.
Thank you, Marcos. And thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Sorry about that. Any other commissioners wishing to speak at this time? Anybody in the room, members of the public, please. Mr. Store.
Good morning, Ray Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I did speak with Mike before the meeting about this, but I want to share an experience I had in and out and around and back and forth and back again, trying to get information about an arrest of my grandson, who, by the way, is biracial. I started out with a phone system, not being able to get any information. So I come down to the civic building. They didn't have any information except an old case. Said he was, it was a juvenile case, so I'm expecting it's a juvenile court. No. I know he wasn't a juvenile, but why did they not have correct records? That's in the main courtroom on the second floor there. So from there, I went across the street and up and down and around there and back and forth, and even to the correction center. You can't get any information, not even the case number. Trying to communicate with him, collect, our telephone system does not accept collect calls. That's the only way they can try to get a hold of him. I can't call him. I can't go down and visit him. If I go down there to try to get information, I have to use this Smartmatic system that is a system run by people outside of this county in another state, and they charge you for it. I wasted about $60 trying to use that system. That could have gone into his account for food and medicine or telephone calls, but no, got wasted. The communication system is very poor. Most everything else, I'm sure, is okay. The other side of this is, I attempted before the pretrial hearing or the bail hearing reduction to insert to the public defender information that says, here is a case of mental illness. She was not very helpful. In fact, she was rude, would not accept the information, did not read my emails. The public attorney, however, was interested, and he tried to talk about it at the hearing, but the judge and the public defender of all people disallowed it. The reason I went down ahead of time is I knew I wouldn't get to speak at that pretrial hearing for a bail reduction by the people that are in fact supposedly taking care of him. Information I gave them is he should not have been sent back there because he does have a mental illness. He's missing part of the brain, a little bit like autism, but it's not autism. Autism is a form of mental illness. Missing a part of the brain.
One minute.
Is a part of an illness. It needs to be changed and looked into. If everybody has the same problem I did, then your whole communication system and coordination for victims and families that you brag so much about this building thing so it makes it easier for them, it needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Director Myers, did you have a comment?
Just, I'll visit with Larry a little bit more. I take it seriously that he had a bad experience. Some of it, it sounds like, wasn't directly under, under corrections purview, but I will visit with him to get a little bit more of the details. As you know, I talked to the board. We did switch to a company called Smart Communications a few months ago that actually reduced costs significantly over what the previous vendor was charging, but as far as figuring out what happened with the money on the account and all that, I'll, I'll spend some time with Larry and try and, and figure that out and, and make sure that our customer service is as it should. service is as it should be.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any comments from anyone else in the room or anyone on Zoom? Seeing none? Do I, we do not have need for an executive session. Do I have a motion for adjournment? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, already no other commissioner. Okay. Will the record reflect that? Motion passes six to zero for adjournment.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We will now commence with our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. The first item of business, minutes and claims, first item of business are items one, A, approval of the Board of Commissioners meeting, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, November 5, 2024. And B, approval of claims submitted for payment processed through Tuesday, November 26, 2024. Do I have a motion and a second? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The consent agenda, the next item of business is the consent agenda with items A through L. Do I have a motion and a second for discussion? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers.
Mr. Chair, just want to clarify real quick before you open the questions. There is item M as well, so A through M. We say A through L, but I just wanted to make sure we catch that last item as well.
Commissioner Morgan amends the motion A through M on the consent agenda. Is the second okay with that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. The second is okay with that. There are members wishing to speak. I believe Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Regarding item K, resolution approving the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, incentive pay supplement effective November 24, 2024 through December 21, 2024, or upon an earlier-to-be-determined sunset date for all eligible Douglas County Health Center employees and authorizing the execution of contract amendments between Douglas County and collective bargaining groups as specified. I'm kind of glad to see this here. Back in the bad old days of COVID, we had discussions about particularly key healthcare personnel who were on the front lines, providing health services to very needy Douglas County residents, and consequently, concerns arose regarding the COVID transmission and the fact that these people were doing above and beyond services to our community. And so we determined that we would provide some incentive pay for them. This went along with incentive pay that we provided to other key personnel, particularly in public safety in Douglas County for similar reasons. And it was a good thing and the right thing to do. I think this is kind of the tail end of that. If I read this correctly, this is for a discrete period of November 24, 2024 to December 21, 2024, which is kind of the, is it the end of this? I would ask whoever. Could you kind of give us a little overview?
Yeah, sure. So Marcos San Martin, Douglas County Administration. So Commissioner, yes, so this would be a third set of funds that are, it's actually received from the state. This is not directly from our allocation, it's federal allocation of ARPA. So this is actually received from the state. It can only be used for retention and staffing needs at our long-term care facility. So it covers all those employees only under long-term care. So they have to be under long-term care. It does not cover CMHC. And yes, Commissioner, it covers two-pay windows. So that's why those dates are rather specific, so it can encompass those two-pay windows for employees. I am not sure if what happens next year, but from what I understand from Didi, this is our third allocation, if you want to call it that. I hope that answers some of your questions.
Yes, and I think if I read the backup info on this correctly, it's an additional something like $6 an hour, is that right?
It is, yes.
One minute.
So it is $6 an hour for all hours worked at the facility regardless of classification. And I have had, the resolution in front of you covers all non-union employees and then all three of the union group employees over there at DCHC.
Thank you. This is a good thing, and I'm glad we're able to do it. It's certainly going to people who did great service to our community during a terrible time and continue to do so. So hopefully, this will help out over the holidays and maybe into the new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Rogers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Ren, I'm assuming you're here for C? Maybe? Can you come down?
Morning.
Morning. I just want to know, who needs to, did he even say his name for the record?
Oh, sorry. Chief Ren, William Ren with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office.
So I didn't know if there was closure on this last time we met, but I just want to make sure. So everybody understands with that, that the county's not picking this up, that if they choose to elect it, that this is coming out on their side?
That is correct. The way we're approaching this is much like someone who would want to have a car payment or a child support payment taken out of their payroll system. That's really the main goal here. This is not replacing any insurance that the county is offering. It's just specifically offered to law enforcement and fire personnel, should they choose to elect it and they're just requesting that if they choose to include that in their additional package that they already have, that we can use the payroll system at their own expense.
Okay. And I'm assuming HR is good with the process and there's no overburden or anything, it just soaks into whatever they're doing?
The last, we had to kind of take a step backwards on this, and as we went through payroll to ask for this, they deemed that we should potentially do a, and we ended up doing a presentation in front of the board and that the board would ultimately decide whether this was an appropriate use of the payroll system. As far as HR goes, I would have to defer to them what they have for comments.
So could somebody give me a sign off that this will flow good?
Well, I know we were talking about HR, but from Dan S., Douglas County Clerk, from payroll's perspective, I talked to Rosio Padilla, our payroll administrator. I think, you know, we're not, we don't see any problems with it. I mean, there may have been a point in time where you keep adding more things. It certainly comes a little burdensome, but to be blunt, I mean, I'm kind of the point where what's one more thing? We're already doing so much. I don't think this is a, anyway, from payroll's perspective, we're comfortable with this. So, but I don't know how HR feels, so.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Borgeson, you're next.
Karen may be the one that needs to answer this, but, well, let me back up because this could potentially reopen what we tried not to do, and that is have everybody coming in, wanting access, and then payroll deductions. So I would like Karen to comment on that, but then I do have a question for you. Last time we talked about this, Commissioner Friend asked the question about competition with who we already have, providing many of the voluntary benefits to our employees, and that this would kind of be in competition with them. Has there been any discussion between you all and HR and Alliant, who provides all of the voluntary benefits to the employees, of a collaboration through them? And if not, I think it might be worth a conversation to see if that is feasible.
To my knowledge, no conversation has taken place with HR or Alliant.
Or Alliant?
Alliant, excuse me.
Okay. Karen, can you maybe elaborate on that a little bit in terms of?
Good morning, Commissioners. Karen Butch, HR Director for Douglas County. I think your question was, have there been any conversations between the Sheriff's Office and HR and then or any conversations with Alliant, our voluntary benefit broker? No, there haven't, I have not had any conversations with the Sheriff's Office regarding this additional benefit coverage for this specific group of employees. And to date, there has not, to my knowledge, been any conversation with Alliant. The coverages, I listened to the presentation yesterday or last week, and the coverages are similar to what's offered through Alliant and through Aflac. However, there are some differences in like, they talked about scholarships and some other features that are not or would not be available through Alliant. I do not know if Alliant would see this as a conflict or a violation of the contract agreement we have with them because we've not had any discussions with them. As far as the coverage for the benefits, it's being limited to the sworn officers within the Sheriff's Office. The only concern, and I haven't talked to legal about it, is I think there wouldn't be an issue if there was an agreement with FOP 2, which is their bargaining agent, but there would potentially be sworn officers that are not covered by that agreement, where we would be offering an additional benefit to those employees that we're not offering to other employees in the county. And I don't know if that would be a violation of any kind of concerns with benefit laws. I don't think so, but it would be a conversation that I would want.
Thirty seconds.
To run by the Civil Division of the County Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, thank you. I think that's probably my only concern is that we're meeting all legal obligations as far as that goes. So if we have a conflict with Alliant, as far as their contract goes, that could lead to liability for us. So I think that needs to be squared away before I would consider approving this. Any thoughts on that? Or Karen, is there anything else that you see could be an issue before approving something like this?
That would be my only concern. Again, I think there needs to be some kind of conversation with Alliant. This is an association benefit for police and fire, obviously, so it's geared directly towards that group, but I would not feel comfortable standing before you today and saying that I think this is going to be okay without a conversation with Alliant because the board didn't enter into a contract with them to provide voluntary benefits specifically for a lot of these types of insurances that the association would be providing.
All right, thanks. And then is there an impetus behind why this was sought out? Was, what's the?
It wasn't sought out. It was actually solicited to the Sheriff's Office.
I see.
Mr. Warnock is here. He basically approached the Sheriff's Office asking if he would be allowed to present this option to sworn members. And it was at that time I mentioned to him, you know, it was probably appropriate. I can't open access to members of the sworn, who are Douglas County employees, but if he chose to, I could make the introduction to the lodge, which would have been a more appropriate forum for him. And he did that. He went to one of their meetings and made the presentation to them. So that's how that came about.
I see. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. Commissioner Borgeson, this is your second time.
Well, with that, all that discussion being said, and there's really no rush, is that okay if we lay this over until December 3 for that conversation to be had, not only with the county attorney and HR and you all, but also with Alliant?
Certainly, we'll follow the will of the board. Our only position on that was that we didn't feel that was an offering of insurance, more just access to the payroll system, but we'll defer to the board's.
Say that again?
Our interpretation of this, just for the record, was that we did not feel it was the county offering any insurance, merely offering access to the payroll system, but certainly your input is important.
And they can still access this without the payroll deduction, correct?
Certainly. If we had never approached the board, they can access it without the payroll system.
Right. But let's just have that conversation with Alliant and the county attorney so we're all on the same page.
Absolutely.
If I may, Teresa, your county attorney's office, could we lay it over till December 10? We have a short week next week and a very early submission date due to the way the board meetings are following, so it would be better, I think, on the 10th, if we could.
So is that, was that sufficient timeframe? Good for you. Commissioner Boyle just made a motion to lay it over until December 3, but are you okay with the 10th? Commissioner Boyle's motion is to lay over until December 10. Is there a second?
Do we need to pull it out?
Oh, yeah, we need to pull it out.
We didn't.
Can you approve with, can you just restate the motion to approve it with that?
I think I'm looking at Teresa. I think we're both fine with that. So it'd be basically the original motion by Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Rogers stands with just the amendment to lay over, so it approved the consent agenda, but lay over minus item C, which is going to be laid over till December 10.
Yes.
All right. Give me one moment, please. Okay, again, it's approving the consent agenda minus item C, which will be laid over until December 10. And Mr. Chair, I'm ready when you are to do the voting.
So the original motion and the second are valid right now, correct?
Yes, they just.
With that, okay.
Yeah, just with the amendment to lay over, see to December 10.
Okay. Commissioners, please. Oh, excuse me. Comments from the public? Mr. Store?
Thanks. Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I step out of the room to speak with Mr. Myers. You're on C, item C?
That is correct.
On the consent agenda?
On consent agenda, correct.
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 You didn't withdraw item K, but the topic came up about ARPA dollars, so I'm going to take an opportunity. You know, most of the time you guys lament unfunded mandates coming your way from the state, but you're very eager to accept ARPA dollars. Well, we had an election, and with the new administration, there's going to be a lot of budget cuts. A lot of unfunded money coming your way is not going to be coming your way. The weekend news shows talked about how close this nation is to bankruptcy with over trillion dollars overspent. So it's time to tighten up. And the other point on that is, because you accept dollars, you're accepting federal control of your government, and that is unconstitutional. The thing's not in the Constitution. The things not in the Constitution are left to the states, the states only. When you accept federal dollars, you're accepting control by them, and that needs to stop. They might claw back for their money. The previous administration probably wouldn't, but the next administration very well might. Where will you come up with the money then? And I might want some of that money for my property tax, by the way, so can I file for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Store. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, any on Zoom? Seeing none? Motion in the second? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Next on our agenda, we do have a couple of recognitions and proclamations, both by Commissioner Borgeson. The first one is honoring Carol Boye. I hope I pronounced that correctly, and I don't know if Carol's here. Okay, she is. So I hope I pronounced it correctly, for her 43 years of service and retirement from Community Alliance. I will give it to Commissioner Borgeson for further comment.
Thank you. Thank you, and I would ask Carol to come forward, and Eileen, if you want to take pictures, you can walk around wherever you need to, to get pictures, and then when we're done, we'll all stand in the front to get a good one with Carol. But with that, we do have a resolution for Carol. Whereas Carol Boye has devoted 43 years as the first and only CEO of Community Alliance, a nonprofit mental health agency whose mission is to help individuals facing mental health and substance abuse challenges to achieve their potential and to live, work, learn, and contribute within a supportive community. And whereas Carol Boye has built a forward-thinking organization consistently collaborating with community partners, and when called upon to address emerging challenges, has innovatively responded. And whereas her leadership not only resolved an immediate housing crisis for those in need, but also laid the foundation for Community Alliance to develop nearly 200 housing units, advocating for policies that enable people to remain in their communities, close to loved ones rather than in institutions. And whereas Carol Boye has tirelessly advocated for the dignity of work and quality of life for individuals facing mental health challenges, forming coalitions, public-private partnerships to expand services, promote responsible regulation, secure sustainable funding, and adopt national standards. And whereas she championed integrated healthcare services, recognizing the critical need for physical health, support for individuals with serious mental illness, a group facing significantly higher rates of chronic health conditions and a life expectancy 20 years shorter than their peers. And whereas Carol Boye's work has made a lasting impact, helping families understand they are not alone, and breaking the silence surrounding mental illness, making it easier for individuals to seek and receive help. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors Carol Boye for her 43 years of service and retirement from Community Alliance dated this 19th day of November 2024. And I would make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Morgan?
And if I could?
By all means.
I just want to thank Carol. I... When I heard about her retirement and attended her event, retirement event, I was a little taken back, because I didn't realize it was 43 years. And she commented to me today that it was like, well, that's because we're old now. It was like, yeah, what the hell happened? But it is quite amazing what you have done, not only just with Community Alliance. That's amazing, but in the community and as Douglas County as a whole. Mental health, we have been able to bring it to the forefront, to talk about it openly and honestly, and to work together to make things better for those who are suffering with mental illness and substance abuse. And you've put together a great team. Eileen, who's here, Brady, who's been your kind of right-hand gal, will now take over, and you do have big shoes to fill, but I have no doubt you have left the agency and our county in a much better place because of your leadership and your passion and compassion for those with mental illness. And I just want to thank you for that, and thought it was appropriate for us to recognize you for all of the years that you have given of yourself to Douglas County. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Carol, I... Forty-three years, it's changed a lot. I just wanted to make, I guess, a comment from my perspective. Forty-three years is a lot of work, and you've seen this environment and the mental health environment change so dramatically as far as how people analyze and come up with answers. My oldest daughter has got a social work degree from Loyola, and she's a therapist, and the stuff that I hear from her and the information that I get was not what it was 40 years ago. So the identification and the clarity that we have now, you saw it when it was more difficult, and it's even more difficult the more clarity that we gain. So thanks for the work you're doing, and I'm closer to this stuff than I ever have been, and I appreciate... I appreciate you being here. I really do. Thank you.
No, I just, once we're done voting...
Okay.
...to get a picture.
All right. No other comments from Commissioners? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Many of you would be disappointed in me if I didn't have something to say. I just want to say that no one ever thought about doing anything for 43 years. I don't think that's true, but it has truly been an honor, and this is all about partnerships. And our partnership with Douglas County all these years, yes, so much has changed. I listened to the corrections report, and it warms my heart that we all talk now about mental health services and reentry and education and public health and all that. What the county does and what you lead is so significant. Commissioner Borgeson, I think if we haven't worked together for 43 years, it's been 42. But the focus that you put on mental health, the focus that you put on public health, the leadership, and moving into corrections and all that makes our work so much better, and it takes a village. We could not do it without all of us working together. So for that, my thanks for this honor, even more, my thanks for doing all you do for the citizens of Douglas County. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. We do have a motion in a second. Please vote.
We did. Yeah.
We did. All right. Somebody want to take over? Thank you again, Carol. There is a second recognition and proclamation. Resolution is recognizing November as National Family Caregiver Month, and I will again give this to Commissioner Borgeson to read the resolution or the proclamation.
Thank you. Whereas family caregivers are the backbone of our nation, making tremendous sacrifices to be there for people who need and cherish them most. And whereas in November, we honor their selfless love and courage, and we commit to getting them the support they deserve. And whereas millions of Americans are part of the so-called sandwich generation, caring for both young kids and aging parents at the same time. And whereas too many families struggle to afford help, spending their own retirement savings to pay for the care of their loved ones, or quitting their own jobs to stay home and provide it themselves, and most often, it is women who bear the brunt of care work. And whereas in the U.S., no one should have to choose between caring for a parent who raised them, a child who depends on them, and a paycheck that they need. And whereas more should be done to ease the load of America's 50 million unpaid family caregivers, who too often still shoulder the burden of care all alone. And whereas how we treat our young children, our aging parents, and loved ones, and how we value those who care for them are fundamental to who we are as a nation. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board does hereby recognize November to be National Family Caregiver Month, and encourage every resident to increase the awareness and understanding of the work that family caregivers selflessly perform day in and day out, and to reach out to those who provide that care, to recognize, honor, and show them gratitude, dated this 19th day of November 2024. And I would make a motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Borgeson, second by Commissioner Boyle? Commissioner Borgeson?
And if I could, this one is really important to me. I've always felt caregivers not only were so important, but really provided a service that was, again, kind of done by unsung heroes. And you don't really understand it. You don't really understand what caregiving means until you do it. And unfortunately, I had to do that with both of my parents, and it opens your eyes to a whole different world. And it really opened my eyes to what so many have done for so long, taking care, again, of their children, or their parents, or loved one, whomever it is. And we just need to do more. They need to be able to feel supported and loved and cared for so that they can take care of those that they need to take care of. And so this is very important, and we need to make sure that not only just this month, but all year, that we make sure that we put caregivers to the forefront of our support and listening to what their needs are. So again, thank you for indulging me in the proclamation.
You're welcome. Well said. Thank you, Commissioner Borgeson. Any other Commissioners wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none? Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. There are no presentations today, no public hearings. Committee Discussion and Action, A, under the Finance Committee, we have the Budget Report and Monthly Fee Report as presented. Item G, under Human Resources, we do have the Weekly Personnel Report as presented. It is my understanding we have no need for an executive session today. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. And... Oops, I thought... Okay. So a motion in a second for adjournment, please. Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Borgeson. Please vote.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Motion passes six to zero. We are adjourned at 10:04 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.